I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Housing Successor Agency and City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Sarno?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo? Councilmembers Zamora?
Here.
Mayor Potem Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Mora?
Here. I'd like to call upon Councilmember Zamora to give the invocation.
Please stand. You please bow your heads. Our heavenly Father would give thanks tonight for the privilege of meeting together to deliberate, to deliberate, to deliberate on matters affecting our city. We ask for your guidance in our efforts to work for the betterment of our community. In your name we pray.
And do we have Andrew Bohorkes from the Youth Leadership Committee here? Okay. Not being present, Councilmembers Zamora, do us the honors in the pledge.
Please place, please place the flag, your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Right of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The City Clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have the opportunity once the City Clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do we have any members in the public wishing to speak today?
Mr. Mayor, we have two speakers. The first one is Letizia Voskas-Wilson.
Thank you. Hello, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Again, my name is Letizia Voskas-Wilson. I'm one of, right now it's seven members of the Central Basin Board, and I hope that you cast your vote for the, I guess, director that will be representing the city. I believe that person will be replaced soon, in the coming months. But I'm here again to express, you know, my great concerns regarding your Public Works Director, Mr. Noa Negreti, who continues to engage in retaliation and harassment against the women directors on our board. In fact, more recently, the board members who are engaging in this level of harassment have decided that the women board members won't be compensated, even though, as you are, all entitled to a stipend for your work, the women on our board won't be able to be, receive compensation. So there's a continual pattern that he has displayed. I have come before you and I have asked that you look at this matter. Mr. Negreti spearheaded an effort at our agency also to change and amend the contract for our general manager, which is very much like your city manager, to require seven votes out of eight to basically terminate the general manager. Who does that? It would be like your city council saying, "We're going to amend the general manager's contract so that we need four votes out of five to terminate our general manager." That makes absolutely no sense. However, these are the sorts of policies that Mr. Negreti, the harasser, which is sitting over there, continues to implement at our, at our agency. As I mentioned, you know, he strongly supported a lawsuit that was filed against me for speaking, for speaking in public about some of the very issues I'm elected to speak on, which is water. I know that your agency has been impacted by PFAS, just like other water, just like other cities in the region. And I was interviewed by a member of the media regarding the issue. And so Mr. Negreti led this effort to file this personal lawsuit, which is really frivolous. Not only was there a lawsuit filed, but there was an attempt to get two separate restraining orders against me to stop me from speaking, which, again, is a part of my duties. As an elected official, this is what we do. We talk about issues that are impacting our community. Both of those restraining orders were rejected by two separate judges. And so, you know, as I mentioned, the pattern continues. And it's almost like, you know, these boys get together and...
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Ronald Wilson.
Okay, Mr. Wilson. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Here we go again. The purpose this time, you guys know about the frivolous lawsuit. They're trying to stop her from speaking. They started with a cease and desist letter from the lawyer, then they went to a censure, and then they went to the two restraining orders, all of which were thrown out by the judges. Your city manager claims there's both sides, but plain and simple truth of it is, the judges have heard the tapes that are on YouTube, and they've read the letters, and they said there's no violation. It's clear and simple. She doesn't impersonate the city manager, or I mean, the general manager, and she doesn't impersonate all of the board members. So this again is to place you on notice. The guy over there with the red and yellow striped shirt and the blue, red and yellow striped pie and the blue shirt, Mr. Negreti, playing with his iPhone, is in a conspiracy as your agent to violate her rights. I'm here to make sure you don't have one defense of you didn't know. You guys do know. You're being placed on notice. You're encouraging this guy. You're enabling this guy through his agency with your counsel to be involved in this frivolous lawsuit. There's a reason two judges threw out the request for restraining order. They did it because there's no evidence. And when the judge asked Mr. Baker, who's the general counsel for Central Basin about the evidence, you know what he told him? He said, "Well, you don't need evidence out of restraining order. That comes later at the trial." What a ridiculous statement. It was like being in Alice in Wonderland. I'm next waiting for the Queen of Hearts to show up. First the verdict, then the trial. But the main purpose is to place you on notice. It's an abusive process. It's malicious prosecution. It's a violation of the Labor Code. It's retaliation. It's harassment. It's discrimination. You guys are placed on notice of it. You're aware of it. I would get something in writing from Central Basin to cover your backsides if they claim they have some merit to it. The only merit they told the judge was a violation of the Administrative Code and speaking on behalf of the entire board. They have no evidence of that. There's none. I'm not talking about bad evidence. I'm talking about no evidence. And so you let him go on and on and support it. That's all right. After it's over, you're going to have to pay the attorney's fees. There will be a cross complaint, of course, for the violations. I urge you to do the right thing. Call off the dogs. If you travel with dogs, you're bound to get fleas. There's one right over there. Negreti acting like he's not paying attention. He knows he's doing the wrong thing. He just doesn't care. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any more speakers.
Thank you. We will now close public comments and move on to our next item. Item number six, Housing Successor Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number six?
I'll move.
I second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, Successor Agency Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number seven?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Item number eight, City Council Agenda. We have seven consent items. Is there a motion for the approval of the City Council Consent Agenda? Motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So ordered.
I just have a question. Do we have to do A through G, or how is this? We're fine? All right.
Okay. Thank you. A public hearing. Item number nine, Consideration of an Appeal Development Plan, Case Number 980 and Related Environmental Documents, Initial Study of Medicated Negative Declaration Planning. Is there motion to continue? Item number nine to the meeting of Tuesday, December 7th, 2021.
I'll move. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 10, Purchase of One New 2022 Ford F-550 with Chipper Dump Body from Fairway Ford. I'd like to call upon the Director of Purchasing Services, Paul Martinez.
I'll move. I mean, it's up to you guys. We already know the report. It's one car.
I'll move. I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Paul. All right, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Purchase of One New 2022 Ford Ranger from Fairway Ford. Director of Purchasing, Paul Martinez. Any questions? This is a new one? Okay.
This is going to code enforcement, so I think there'll be some lights in the grill. I'm not sure. There's not much more beyond that. No way maybe?
Yeah.
I know, I know. Dino Torres, Director of Police Services. Yeah, no, there's nothing. There's graphics that are put on it, perhaps a step when you get into the car. That's it. No, 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 no. This is a code enforcement, so all it's going to say is code enforcement on there, and that's it.
It doesn't get outfitted with the same as the PSO.
No, no, because they do different functions. No, none of that. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I'll move.
Thank you. I think we have a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Item number 12, Approval of Agreement Between the City of Santa Fe Springs and the State, California State University of Los Angeles Student Intern Program. I'd like to call upon Community Services Supervisor Jose Correa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, and members of the council. My name is Jose Correa, your Community Services Supervisor at the Gustav拉斯科 Neighborhood Center, and I will be presenting on the approval of agreement between the City of Santa Fe Springs and the California State University of Los Angeles Student Intern Program. Some background on the, on the program. For over 25 years, the City of Santa Fe Springs Family and Human Services Division has partnered with local universities to provide undergraduate social work students with valuable fieldwork experience, working with families, older adults, and the community at large. Every year, the Family and Human Services Division partners with the California State University System. In this instance, the California State University of Los Angeles to host social work interns at the Gustav拉斯科 Neighborhood Center. In order to qualify for the internship program, students are required to be in the last year of their Bachelor of Social Work degree program and must complete 420 hours of supervised fieldwork. Student interns are trained and coached by our Family and Human Services caseworkers, which provide hands-on training, guided case management services, integration of classwork and fieldwork, and service to the community. Many times directors, managers, or even supervisors, even supervisors receive credit for a successful program. However, in this case, I want to showcase the employees that really make this program run, which are the social workers at the Gustav拉斯科Center. We have Ivan Peraza Mendoza, who is a caseworker too. She held a bachelor's degree in social work from Cal State Long Beach. She has experience working in the field of mental health, medical social work, yin and traiation, and school-based social work. And she has 19 years of experience as a caseworker with the City of Santa Fe Springs. There's also Evelyn Ramos, who was a caseworker one. She held a bachelor's degree in social work from Cal State Los Angeles. She has experience in working with the nonprofit sector with an emphasis in mental health and early childhood education. And she has been a caseworker one with the Family and Human Services Division for three years. Post-internship, so approximately 40 interns have completed the program, 11 of which have done so in the past five years. Some of our, some of our former student interns have served our community in local agencies such as SASFA, The Whole Child, Exceptional Children's Foundation, Alma Family Services, Volunteers of America, and Pacific Clinics. Others have taken their skills abroad to other states and countries, including Costa Rica and even the United Kingdom. Many have pursued their master's degrees in social work and/or have become licensed clinical social workers, holding positions as directors and other high administrative jobs. The fiscal impact for this program, there is a non-monetary agreement and has no fiscal impact to the general fund. The agreement allows for additional case management resources from the city, from the city to the community residents. It is recommended to approve the California State University Los Angeles Clinical Affiliation Agreement Number 6721-0151HC. It is also recommended to authorize the mayor to execute and sign the California State University Los Angeles Clinical Affiliation Agreement Number 6721-0151HC. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that the mayor or the council may have.
I'll move.
One question. Well, you may, you just got on board, so you may not know, but anybody say, have any of those interns worked here in our city for us?
We currently have, we currently have two interns that are working in the program.
Okay.
And as far as work experience in the city?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you talking about mayor that have been hired on after their internship? Is that what you were?
Right. Yeah, hired after.
Apparently not. No.
Apparently not.
But it's great to hear that, you know, we are taking in interns too. So I think we've come a long way as a city. You know, now that we've had, you know, we've had quite a few interns running around, we don't see too many familiar faces because they're interns. So that's a great thing. And of course, the experience they get from here, they travel some to other places to actually use that. So thank you to staff for actually, you know, stepping up and using interns.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of item number 12?
I'll move.
You got a motion in a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 13, Clark Estate Carpet Replacement and Betty Wilson Center Vinyl Floor Replacement and Interior Painting. Authorization to advertise for construction bids. I'd like to call upon Parks and Recreation Services Manager Gus Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. So our Public Works Team and our Community Services Department have been working collaboratively to identify this new funding source for us and to identify some of these projects. So we're going to get into the Prop 8 projects here. As a brief background, in 1992, the Safe Neighborhoods Parks, otherwise known as the Proposition A, was approved by voters. In 1996, voters approved a second assessment of the Regional Park and Open Space District, and this established a maintenance and servicing fund to subsidize the cost of maintaining and operating newly-built projects. In 2018, this proposition expired, and the city's unspent funding was approximately $100,000. The projects that were previously funded by Prop 8 include the Little Lake Park North Ballfields, the Clark Estate Carpet and Synthetic Turf, and the Park Gets. And now to talk about the projects that we've identified, I'd like to hand it over to our Public Works Director, Noe Negrete.
Yeah, this really is a tag-team effort. I'll get into that at the end here. But we did look at some projects. As Gus did say, these are projects that were previously used the same funding. So the restriction is we have to go back to a project that had that same funding and do the same type of work. So based on the needs and the priorities, we've identified three projects. The first one is over at the Clark Estate. It's to redo all the carpeting on the first and second floors. That's number one. Second project, both are at the Betty Wilson Center. In the main assembly room is the removal and replacement of the vinyl flooring, as well as the painting of that main assembly room as well. So what you have before you today are the three projects listed. There's their costs totaling the $100,000 that we have left over in the Prop 8 funds. What we're asking for today is to add the project to the capital improvement plan, to approve the plans and specifications, and to authorize me to advertise for construction bids. Happy to take questions.
I got a question. So the carpet upstairs and downstairs, is there a reason why we are putting carpet back and not going with vinyl flooring that's waterproof with all the traffic that goes in and out there? There's that, maybe carpet upstairs, but the downstairs of, because of the weddings and the people that go, it's just more maintenance for us to maintain.
Good, good question. Unfortunately, with this monies, we have to go back with the same material that we initially installed. We're going to go with carpet tiles, though, as opposed to, right now it's all one piece, so when it does get issues, stains, it's more cumbersome. In the future, we have the tiles, so we're able to take that piece out and replace it with another piece. But yeah, unfortunately, we're stuck to the original scope of work. We're unable to change that.
What happens if the carpet tiles run out of stock, or they're not in, they don't have that same layout? Are we going to buy extra, or how are we, what are we going to do to?
Is your question?
Yeah, they discontinue, like, you know, at Home Depot.
So it's not the same, we're not obligated to the same carpet. It just has to be carpet. So as long as it goes back as carpet, it is equivalent.
No, no. But the question I'm asking is if they discontinue it.
If you, the new one that you put in?
So we always buy, we always buy more. How much more is a great question, right? We buy more. It's enough to figure out some repairs, but not to redo all the floor, because we don't have infinite storage. But we do buy extra carpet tiles for those cases.
It's like what Councilmember Sarno's saying, like, you have some areas that you know is going to have heavy traffic. So we know during, in that area, you're going to have to probably replace it. But after a while, if you don't have the carpet to replace it, that's when I'm looking the forethought that we need to make sure that we cover our backs and make sure we buy either enough, or we know that they're not going to discontinue at any time within the next five to seven years.
Well, we usually buy extra.
How old is that carpet in there?
Placed in 2012.
Eight years, nine years?
Ten-year life.
Ten-year lifespan? Hopefully the carpet.
Okay, thank you, Noe.
Oh, Noe, I wanted to say, I think the carpet tile is going to be great. We, we have the same tiles, carpet tiles at our company, and they just work really good. Just like, like you were saying, laminate flooring would be a great idea, but since we can't do that, the carpet tile is a great option. And like you said, you can replace the little tiles instead of the whole carpet. Thank you.
This, like, considered like a landmark, correct? Like historical? We don't actually have to do?
There's differences there.
We don't have to follow certain guidelines for this, right?
It doesn't meet the stringent requirements, if that's what you're asking. Correct.
Oh, good, good. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Noe.
Last, I just want to thank Gus and Parks and Rec. This is really a tag-team effort. So we are, with our resources, it helps us to expand by doing more projects, finding more money. So this, he did work with LA County to get this money. We had it. We didn't, weren't fully aware of it. He came on board and he made us aware of it, filled out the application. We're still going through that process, but he is doing a lot of the legwork. So I did want to give him credit for that.
Thank you, Gus.
Thanks, Gus.
What's up, Gus?
It doesn't matter what the government works, and we all work together. It's all that matters.
All right. Good teamwork. Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion for item number 13?
I second.
Okay. Those, any opposed? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 14, Phase 1 and 2 Environmental Site Assessment, Parcel 1. I'd like to call upon Director of Planning, Wayne Morrell. There he is.
In case nobody knew who I was.
Furious. Where's the smile, Wayne?
Good. Hello, everyone. Obviously, that's me.
I can't tell you're not wearing your glasses.
So today I'm here before you to award a contract to Waterstone Environmental and for the appropriation of fund specifically for some work that will be done at the Sculpture Garden. And just for point of reference, located at Telegraph Road and, Telegraph Road and Norwalk Boulevard, this is what is proposed at this corner. We do have an exclusive negotiating agreement with the Westland Group to develop this property with smaller buildings, kiosks, a stage area, area where people can sit, bring their kids, be entertained. And that was one of the items that was mentioned in the general plan, creating that downtown area. So in order for that to occur, we need to subdivide the property. So the developer will be taking approximately two acres for that development. Also, what needs to be done, and is specifically I am before you today, is that we need to hire someone to do a Phase 1 and Phase 2 site assessment, because there are a couple sumps and an old gas station on the site. Also, there are two wells. But just to frame this, so this is a vision. And again, I know I'm here for money and contract, but I do want you to see what it will accomplish. So this is the vision for that area. Nice signage. And these are some examples of selfie spot area. We're trying to be very creative, create a place where people can come, relax, because the joke is at 5:00 or 5:30, everybody leaves. There's not a place for them to, to really congregate to enjoy themselves. So, and the developer that we have this exclusive negotiation agreement with, they've done downy landing, so that's one of the product. But this is an example of what can be built at that site. Various entertainment venue, nice, very, very nice landscaping. So keep with the vision. Very nice landscaping, lighting, very nice signage, something that, that stands out. But before all of that can occur, there are certain things that need to be done. One of them is an appraisal. We've already done that. The property has been appraised. The other one is to subdivide the property. That's been done. We have a tentative map. The developer has walked the site and know where the boundaries of the proposed development will be. There are two oil wells on the site. We have approximate estimates to if the department, not Calgem, not Dog anymore, if Calgem wants those two wells to be re-abandoned, we have costs for that. The last item is the Phase 1, Phase 2, and that's what's before you today, to approve, awarding the contract to Waterstone, and an appropriation of fund to do so, where you approving this, we now have everything that's in place. Once, of course, the work has been done, to sit down with the developer, negotiate some price, enter into a purchase and sales agreement, and move forward with that vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Do we have a motion for the approval of item number 14?
I'll move. Second.
Any of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item number 18, Adopt resolution number 9737, Approving Changes to the Salary Schedule and Approval of Related Personnel Modifications. I'd like to call upon Director of Finance, Travis Hickey.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Here again, it feels like almost every meeting we have some changes with the personnel. We're getting near the end of all the changes that we're... We're getting near the end of all the changes that we're needing to make stemming originally from a lot of modifications that were included as part of this fiscal year budget. So the changes under this resolution deal with public works positions primarily within the Water Department, a couple of additional positions. So the, the salary ranges, the job specifications were all included with the agenda report. So I wasn't intending to go through those in detail, but I'm happy to talk about any of those. We did work with the General Employee Association on these changes. The council may recall that part of our labor agreement that we entered into in June required the city to discuss with the association issues relative to certifications that a number of positions are required to have and the pay associated with that. So along with the changes that the, the city needed to make anyways, we were able to work with the association to address their concerns regarding the certifications specifically for the water position. So with that, happy to take any questions.
Right, thank you, Travis. Okay, do we have a motion for the approval of item number 15?
I'll move.
You've got a motion, second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. A presentation from Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce Member and Capitalization Capabilities, Secretary of Treasury Wendy Meter Coonert. Let's call upon Wendy Meter Coonert.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. CAPC empowers individuals with disability and works with them to gain employment, assisted living arrangements, connects them to the community by providing access to transportation, improve their communication, and help them pursue higher education and strong relationships. They provide innovative supported employment and supportive living services for people with disabilities in the Greater Whittier and Orange County areas, including Santa Fe Springs. In February, upon the retirement of our prior CEO, the CAPC Board of Directors launched a search committee to recruit a new executive director that will lead the outstanding CAPC team to continuing to serve our existing client base as well as expand our services. After an exhaustive search and interview process, I'm excited to announce today is Shawna Efting's first day as Executive Director of CAPC. She has a bachelor's degree in sociology from Cal State Fullerton. She was Vice President of Operations at the Greater Whittier YMCA for the past five years, and it is my pleasure tonight to introduce you to Shawna as our new Executive Director.
Good afternoon. I just wanted the opportunity to say hello, and I look forward in working with the city and expanding our services into Santa Fe Springs. We know we have a few consumers, and I would like to see that grow pretty quickly. Like Wendy said, today is my first day, and I've been on calls since 8:00 AM, so literally hit the ground running. So, but if any questions are asked, anyone has any questions, or please let me know, and I'm here to serve.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations.
We will now recess the meeting and walk over to Veterans Memorial Fountain to recognize our city's veterans. So we'll meet outside at the Veterans Fountain. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. I'd like to call upon City Manager, Ray Cruz.
Yes, we have a very special announcement to make tonight. We have a city council member whose birthday is this week. That is Councilmember Juanita Trijo. Right now, we've got to say happy birthday. So on three, one, two, three. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Juanita. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. I'm not the same age as you.
You have a special, special cake in the back individually.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to bring up the City Manager Executive Team Reports, and we can put the first slide up. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I attended the Fifth Annual City Manager Summit at USC Hotel this past Thursday, October 28th. This event was cosponsored by the California Contract Cities Association and USC Soul Price School of Public Policy. It's always great to be back on campus where I received my Master's in Public Administration. This event had educators and practitioners speak on a number of public policy issues, including affordable housing, economic development, demographic shifts in Southern California, police reform, and expanding broadband opportunities in one's community. Next slide. So whoever said that City Managers Offices and City Clerks Office and staffs are not creative or are boring, well, they have not seen Santa Fe Springs City Managers Office or City Clerks Office staff. So here is the annual office theme Halloween costume event. It happened this past October 28th. It was not a contest, but our public information officer said it was, we would have won by landslide, so they are there. But, so now moving on to our next speaker, Director of Public Works, Noe Negrete.
No report, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say thank you to all those who've served our country. Thank you.
Next, Director of Planning, Wayne Morrell.
On my report, I would like to call Vince Velasco, my, my associate planner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me. Just three quick planning and development updates for you. The first of which is right here on Pioneer around the corner from the Civic Center. You may have noticed the green construction fencing that was installed within the last couple of weeks slash months. There is construction activity occurred to be in the near future. There will be a demolition of seven existing buildings for the construction of three new modern industrial buildings. They have started to excavate for the existing wells that are on site as well as doing leak testing for those wells. However, the owner will need to amend two of the three DPAs that are on file for this property. They have some minor modifications to do to two of the buildings to adjust the sizes to fit their suitable tenants. Next, we have the property on Freeway Drive. You may know it as the former Suzuki Building. If you've driven the Five South Freeway over the last 10 years or so, you'll know that the I-5 Freeway expansion trimmed or cut a portion of the front property. And so you may have noticed the property as is on the bottom screen there. Recently, earlier this year, the Planning Commission approved a facade treatment to this site, and we'll let you know that the, the project has commenced and the construction activities are occurring as we speak. Lastly, there is a building, a new construction building at Cambridge, 13215 Cambridge Street. That new building that should be finalled any day now will home Peloton. If you're not familiar with Peloton, they are a leader in fitness equipment, and so this facility will, will house, will warehouse and distribute that fitness equipment. Those are all the items I have. Happy to answer any questions on any of those items, otherwise I'll turn it back over to you guys.
Thank you, Vince. Wayne, now I'd like to bring up Director of Police Services, Dino Torres.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This, the week before last, our department led city employees in participating in the Great Shakeout. Public safety officers were assigned to facilitate the shakeout exercise at City Hall, Town Center Hall, Library, Police Services. Staff guided employees through the drop, cover, and hold-on drill, assisted with evacuation efforts, and concluded with an exercise debrief. The Great Shakeout event takes place each year on the third Thursday in October, and the goal of the exercise is to be better prepared for an earthquake and have an evacuation plan in place. Next slide. I wanted to show you a couple of slides. There's, there's three or four slides here. As you know, we, we changed up because of the COVID, the, the red ribbon week. And so Rick was here a few weeks ago to let you know about the video about the participation of the council, which we, we thought was very important to convey that message to the community and to the, to the children in our community, which are the most important. And so part of it was the bridge turning red, having the red during the last week of October. And so the photographer, videographer, Steve Brown, he, he went out on a, on that week and took a couple of pictures. I don't know what you would call this style where you have the, the cars going by really fast or that, that effect. Could you go to the next one, please? And then the next one? And then finally, the last one, I believe. And so that's it. I know that council members were at the schools. I had the opportunity to be at the school at Lakeview. I think it was a Monday or Tuesday, Monday it rained, so on, on that Tuesday. And, and it was really nice to see how the, the children decorated the school, the, the participation of, of the children in all the schools. And then subsequently, we had the council go out as part of the caravan and go out to, to the schools and, and capture those moments. We also have, we hope to have some administrators there say, say a few words. And then I believe it was today, yeah, today, we had, I think, most if not all the council member at the Betty Wilson Center to do those, those thoughtful, insightful interviews about your thoughts regarding the red ribbon event and how impactful it is to our community. So that was my two reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dino. Now let's bring up Fire Chief Brent Hayward.
Mayor and council, good evening. Good evening, everybody, to our veterans. Thank you very much for your service. You're always in our hearts, and we appreciate all your service and commitment to our nation and our families. Thank you. I'd like to first start with the, just the bi-weekly COVID numbers, just what's changed in 14 days. The COVID positivity rates continues to stay very low. It's at 0.81% as of today. The hospital average rate is just a little bit higher at 672 admissions for COVID-related illnesses in our hospitals. But again, that's within the entire county of Los Angeles, so that's a, that's a, that's a very low number. Average deaths over the last 14 days, average seven per day at this point. What's changed in Santa Fe Springs, just 35 additional COVID positive reports, no additional deaths. So the numbers are looking good. We still encourage everybody to get vaccinated, wear masks, distance, and, and do your best. Next slide. Just wanted to report that we just finished up October and our Breast Cancer Awareness Month themed with the special shirts and the flags, and we were very well received in the city. Lot of positive comments, and so we hope that encourages everybody to, to take care of and, you know, beware of cancer. Excuse me. Last, last slide. So with October leaving us, we move into Movember. Movember is always a fun time in the fire department because both police and firefighters get really creative, and we find out who can really grow a mustache and, and can't like this guy. But the month of November is to bring awareness to men's health for prostate and testicular cancer. So you'll see some interesting mustaches being grown over the next month, and we look forward to showing some of those off. But that concludes my report. Thank you.
Chief, now I'd like to bring up Director of Finance, Travis Hickey.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the council, and I too would like to express my thanks and gratitude for all of our veterans and especially the ones who were able to be out here tonight. Quick update from our Human Resources Office. We're in the middle of our open enrollment period, so we, we just concluded with our full-time medical and dental open enrollment. We had 19 individuals make changes to their coverage. We're still in open enrollment for our other programs, including flexible spending, dependent care, and Aflac optional insurance coverages. We have our, our part-time employee open enrollment for eligible employees for part-time healthcare will open up in December. Additionally, we had two human resource staff attend the CalPERS Educational Forum on October 19th and 20th. It was a good opportunity to hear directly from PERS and go in-depth in areas of retirement, business rules, health business rules, survivor benefits, power of attorney designations, and disability retirements. I wanted to also give the council an update on the outages we experienced last month with the city's phone systems. We had began, began experiencing an outage on October 11th. The determined, it took a while to figure out with Frontier, but they were able to determine there was a 700-foot section of cable that went out in Pioneer Boulevard. It took them a bit over two days, two and a half days to get that fully restored. And so we were quite disappointed with the, with the response and the period of time that we were, we were out. These were high transmission lines that carry from 40 of the city's phone lines. Even after those were restored on the 13th, there were a number of single lines that, that continued to be out, including ones that served our fax machines, credit card machines, and alarm systems. Thank you and credit to Paul Martinez, who stayed on them and, and had to do trouble tickets one by one and escalated through our representatives with Frontier to get those back on service. And when we thought the problems were fixed, then we found we were having issues continuing at Gus Velasco's Neighborhood Center where multiple calls could not come in simultaneously. That was later determined with the help of Vox, our, our phone consultant, that we had a, a problem in our switch. And so via the manufacturer got the, the switch replaced for us. And at this time, we're, we're back on track with the phone systems. Paul also worked with City Managers Office and Ray Lane to, to get as much information out on social media as we could, you know, but unfortunately, it was a, a tough time for us, and we realized how vulnerable we are with the phone system. So it's coincidentally, we had already been in talks with Vox regarding an alternative to copper. I think with our, with the phone companies, there's, they're not really willing to make a big investment in upgrading their copper lines, and so we're looking to alternatives in the future. And so we do have a, a plan to explore the ability to have our phone lines switched over to our existing fiber optic cable through spectrum, which services our, our data needs in the city, along with a backup system that would operate off of a wireless LTE network in the event of a, a failure in the fiber optic cable. So, so we are, we, we're working on that, and we'll continue to make that a priority. And so I wanted to just provide that update. Thank you.
Real quick, Travis, did they give us a credit, Frontier?
They gave us credit for how hard we worked.
For the record, no credit.
Well, I want to give credit to Travis because he is a veteran. I'd just like to recognize that, but thank you for your service, Travis. And all the community's veterans, thank you for your service, and especially Nakamuros, who did the ultimate sacrifice with their son. But at this point, I'd like to bring up Director of Community Services, Maricela Baderas.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, members of the council. I have a couple of items to share with you this evening. I wanted to start off with our pumpkin carving. So on Friday, October the 29th, our local parks hosted a pumpkin carving activity for our kids ages five to 12. In total, we had 52 participants that registered for the activity. On the screen, we have some pictures of the pumpkin carving festivities that took place at Santa Fe Springs Park and Little Lake Park. Then this past Sunday, October 31st, our Parks and Rec Division hosted the annual Halloween Carnival at Los Nietos Park. The event was really well received by our community, and we had many residents who expressed positive feedback on the various activities that were available. It was estimated that we had over 1,500 community members attend the event. I want to thank all of you for your attendance and your support for this event. We couldn't do these type of events without your support, so I thank you. I also want to extend a huge congratulations to Gus Hernandez and his staff for the outstanding job they did on planning the event. As you know, that the event layout was very different this year. Staff created Covington's Corner to commemorate Dale Covington's contribution to the city's Halloween event. The decor throughout the park was tastefully done, and it gave the Halloween look and spirit that invited our community to attend. spirit that invited our community to attend. The costume parade was actually my favorite part of the event that evening. It was great to see so many kids in costume come up to the stage and have their names called and walk across the stage to celebrate. Based on the look on their faces, I'm sure that a lot of them are going to have unforgettable memories. I want to show you a short video to recap the event. And then lastly, on Friday, October 29th, the Family and Human Services hosted its annual Halloween light dance for our older adults at Heritage Park. This was the first dance event that we hosted since the beginning of the pandemic. The seniors were really excited and happy to come out and mingle with their friends, dance, and enjoy a delicious Italian meal. They were able to meet the new staff, and they participated in a costume contest. Our musical performer that afternoon was Balthazar Estrada. Here's also a short video recapping. And that's all I have for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Maricela. Mr. Mayor, that ends our executive team reports.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Sarno. Councilmember Trujillo. Councilmember Zamora.
First, I want to thank all the veterans today for all the service that you provided us to be able to be up here and make these choices for our city and the freedom that you've given us. I thank you guys all, employees, staff, city, community members, everyone. Seems like it was a busy week. We did a lot of stuff this week. I want to thank Rick Brown, Dino, for making this Red Ribbon Week as genuine as possible, although we missed the parade. But this was really good, kind of personal, to be able to see these kids up front and personal. And, you know, they got to see McGruff and, what's the police, just a blow-up police officer. I guess he doesn't have, he doesn't have a name, poor guy. He needs a name. But it's great to see us still come as a community, get to the kids, and make sure they get the message of say no to drugs. So I thank you guys for that. That was awesome. Gus, you put on a fantastic show at Halloween. As in the past, Eddie would know, next year, you got to step up and make it better, and it's going to be harder. So I commend you on that and look forward to seeing what you have to show us next year. It was a great event, and thank you. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Trujillo.
First, thank you for the birthday wishes. Thank you so much. Again, thanks for our veterans. My dad was a World War II vet, so it touches home. It's what you guys went through. You guys signed up for it. You guys weren't, you know, forced to do it. You guys did it because you knew that was the right thing to do. So I commend you from the bottom of my heart and the rest of the council as well. Again, we've been so busy this week. It felt like it was back to normal. We actually were able to do events, the Red Ribbon Event. That was awesome, just coming up, you know, going to different schools, seeing how excited they were. It was really good. It was starting to be normal. So thanks again, Rick. I know he's not here, Dino, and the staff. Thank you so much. The Halloween event was pretty awesome. I mean, it's pretty cool. Like, you saw the parents and aunts and uncles taking pictures of all the little kids. They thought that they were like the winners, and it was awesome. Thank you for doing that. But Gus, you said something to me when I got there. I told you during the day and night, I said, "Thank you. It was an awesome event." And you said something that showed leadership. You said, "It wasn't me. It's my staff that made it happen," and that shows leadership. So thank you for acknowledging that it is staff. It's everyone together who's doing that. So thank you. Also, I forgot to report, in September, John and myself, we were at independent, were you independent? Did you do it independently with us? Yes. Independent contract? Oh, no, independent cities? No, independent cities.
Big of cities.
Yeah, we went, and I forgot to report on it. So I do apologize for that. It was really good, especially with the SB9 going on, where they said we have to bring more housing. We met with Gonzalez, which is our lobbyist, which one thing, and hopefully will be able to do so we don't have to add all these homes. There's a small little clause that we might be able to work around. And going to these conferences and speaking to other people and try to help us out makes a big difference. So again, I'm reporting that. I know I was there, John and Ray, and what we learned from that. So hopefully it'll help us in the housing project, you know, hopefully we won't have to add so many homes to our city. And after that, I think that's it. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zamora.
Same thing. I just want to echo what my colleagues are saying, you know, to the veterans. I mean, we know that veterans and their families, they not only pay a price, but the fact of a price that they pay for a lifetime. Some of them struggle with PTSD and struggle with other things that we know that. I wish, you know, not only our community, but our nation would actually do a lot more to step up, to show them the actual praise that they actually deserve. Also, Red Ribbon Week, you know, the fact, Red Ribbon Week, I mean, we know that the whole model is say no to drugs, but Dino hit it spot on. When it comes to the kids, it's all for the kids. And, you know, just to be that, you know, just to reflect that, what they need to understand about saying no to drugs and just having the courage to say no. I mean, that's the hard part. So I think the fact of Dino and your staff, everything you guys do with Rick, just putting it out there, you know, making sure that they have that conversation when they can go home, just the significance of the color red. It just shows all that, that, you know, hopefully there's talking points when they can go home. And of course, it's just the easiest talking point is saying no to drugs. Halloween, the event, you know, was a fabulous event. And, you know, Gus, you guys did a tremendous job. Like Juanita said, it's just, it's your staff. They did an amazing job, but of course, them doing an amazing job takes an amazing leader. So thank you for the, you know, for the work that you've done. I think you've only been here for, what, two years now, maybe? And so I just want to commend you on that. Hopefully you just keep showing great success and, you know, thank you for all the staff that give you the support, you know, with being able to run a successful program, you know, whether it be Eddie, Maricela, Jose, you know, thank you for all the support that you guys do give each other to actually run a successful event. And of course, to all our staff in general, thank you for coming out here and doing the jobs that you guys do. You know, we still, you know, I think we're in 18, 19 months now with the pandemic, and yet we still, you know, strive together. Together, we can make a difference. And, you know, just the fact that, you know, we show the emotions and the love for one another to make sure that, hey, everyone is in a safe place. So once again, just take care and God bless.
Mayor Proton Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good evening, and I'm just going to echo with what all our councilors are saying, too. Thank you to our veterans that serve and continue to serve our country. We are so proud of you. You look great in your uniforms, by the way, too. And we're very proud to see the Marines, the Navy, just all of them, all of the ranks. Thank you so much. And, yeah, I do, what Joe Angel said about the PTSD, I do have seen that in our veterans, too. And I hope that our nation can continue to work on programs for our veterans with the homeless issue and, you know, providing homes and helping out to serve, because they served us, we need to, we need to give back to them. So thank you for serving our country. We appreciate you. I wanted to also thank Gus for the Halloween and the staff, all the staff for the Halloween festivities. I don't know if I have Wayne's last name right, but Wayne Bergron. He asked the Women's Club to have a booth, and we accepted. And he did nothing but help us. All the staff helped us with the tables, with the ice chests, everything. And we made a very nice profit. Some of our council doesn't like to be acknowledged, but thank you, Joe Angel Zamora, for all of your donations that you gave to this event. It was just a great event, and the Halloween show, the costume, the costume celebration on stage, the kids had a blast. Everybody, all of us, we had a blast. So I wanted to thank you for all your hard work, and please tell all your staff that all of Parks and Rec, that was just great. We do have a Santa Fe Springs Women's Club boutique this Friday, and I hope that everybody comes out. It's going to be right there at the Town Center from nine o'clock to three o'clock. And I wanted to thank, again, another one that doesn't like to be acknowledged. I want to thank Jay Sarno for your contributions to the Women's Club. And if the meat doesn't taste good, you can blame Jay. He supplied all the meat. No, seriously, it's going to, seriously, it's going to be great. The meat is going to be delicious. So please come out and grab yourself a sandwich and check out the boutiques. The Red Ribbon Art Contest, I want to say, Dino and Rick Brown and our photographer, everybody that had a role in this, it was all our staff. They made the banners, the balloons. I mean, we, you know, the police service, we couldn't have done it. It's a team effort. It's the community coming together and giving those awards out to the students that, one, it was just so inspiring to see their faces when they received these awards. We didn't give them a gift. They gave us a gift. And it makes me feel proud to be involved in our community and to be a part of all of this. I want to thank everybody just for allowing me to sit up here and be a part of our community. It just touches my heart because I've said this before, but if I wouldn't have, I wouldn't even imagine being up here with all these fine people and all sitting here before you. So thank you so much. And happy birthday, Juanita. Hope you have a great birthday this Saturday. And I wanted to, last but not least, I wanted to say, there's a person here that it's his birthday, and he's 85 years old, and that's my dad, Armando Hernandez. And I just wanted to say... My dad is one of my heroes. He's always taught us just the greatest things. He's a competitor. He's a leader, and he always told us to get out there, be competitive. He bought me my first bunt trumpet when I was in band. And I started band in the fourth grade. He bought me my trumpet. I couldn't reach the high notes because my lips were too big. And he told me, flatten your lips out and get, reach those high notes, and you're going to get it. But you're going to be in there, be competitive. You will find a way. And I said, "But I can't do it." He says, "Look, when you have to do something, you will find a way to do it." And that sticks with me, and that's what I tell, I'm a mentor, I give to the students, "You will find a way to do something. If you want to do something, don't give up and stay in the game. Be competitive." So thank you, Dad. I got cupcakes in the car, and we're going to go to dinner. So happy birthday. Thank you.
John, sorry, I forgot something. I need to apologize. Noi, I would like to apologize. Just for the fact of how we're having public comment and the fact that we allow someone to come in and bash you, that's not what you signed up for. And if I can do anything, I know if council could have done anything for it, that's not what you signed up for. And I apologize for that, that we can't do anything. But thank you for doing what you do. Thank you for that. I had in my notes to tell you that, but like I said, it bothers us. I know it bothers us that we can't say nothing, but we would love to do to say anything to stop. So like I said, just know we do support you, but that's not, that's not acceptable for us as council. And I wish we could do something, but yeah, thank you.
All right. My turn. Well, there's no doubt that we live in the greatest city. I mean, this is our town. We are Santa Fe Springs, and, you know, just with all the comments that have been mentioned up here. I just want to just, first and foremost, the most important, of course, to you, to our veterans, you know, we will not, we would not be here without you, those that have gone before us. And so we really appreciate, you know, those people that have served, that I definitely had to mention. And of course, happy birthday to Mr. Hernandez and Juanita also. Then also, our staff is so creative and innovative during these times, you know, the creativity with these modifications of programs, because we, it's already, you know, not quite post-COVID, but, you know, you just got, guys get just creative, and, you know, life does go on. So Hollywood was great, and, you know, Gus and your team, and just a collaborative effort finding that money for expenses like the Clark Estate and Betty Wilson Center. You know, this is great that we find these monies to, you know, to do some of these capital improvement projects. But I was going, and I didn't need, also need to mention that we were at the California League of Cities, and we did, you know, learn quite a bit regarding housing ethics, social media. So it was a good experience for myself, Juanita, and Ray while we were up there. So we did learn quite a bit. With that said, I'm pretty much done, but Ken, Arnold, if you're on Zoom, if you're listening, I appreciate your service, your commitment to our community, and we just thank you for all you do for us each and every single day out in the planning commission. So that's it. Happy Veterans Day, and we are adjourned. Thank you.